Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Griffin's Board of Commissioners, April 26th workshop. Hope everybody's having a great Griffin day. We had several items to go through this morning. First is discuss proposed ordinance allowing infill development in all residential zoning districts, planning and development director Chad Jacobs will discuss.
Good morning, sir. How y'all doing?
Good.
Excellent, thank you. So what you have before you this morning and hopefully tonight is a text amendment to allow the infill language into our HDRA or HDRV zoning districts as a matter of right. As y'all may well know, we are part of the Griffin Spalding Community Strategic, there's a strategic plan that we do through UGA Archways and within that plan there's a housing element. And under the housing element, we have an objective that refers to increasing homeownership across the community with a corresponding action item that states to rezone select high-density residential areas to single-family within the city of Griffin and Spalding County. Instead of us approaching this from a rezoning standpoint, we decided to go ahead and take these existing lots that are in there already developed from a single-family development standpoint and just allow us to use the infill language. So that's why we're including this in as a permitted use. So that infill language is under our section 605B and 605C and it's proved to be very effective. So you know, like where the old flower shop was there on Sixth Street and the White House that popped up there, that was done through infill. Just kind of give you guys an example. So with that, we want to have an answer to your questions.
So the square footage requirements, how, I didn't see anything.
So what we do, infill takes into account 400 feet in both directions of the property and you take an average because obviously in a lot of these older existing neighborhoods, you know, you've got these lots are tenth of an acre in size, so you really can't jam an 1,800 square foot house on them, they're not going to fit, it's not going to work. So you kind of take an average of what's already out there and that's essentially what we did for the one on Sixth Street. So they ran anywhere from like up to like 2,200 square feet on down to say like 1,100 square feet and you just kind of look at 400 feet of opposite directions of that.
Any other questions or comments on this matter?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. I'd like to discuss proposed ordinance to amend the occupational tax certificate due date. Tax and license administrator Karen Bennett will address.
Hey, good morning, y'all. How are y'all? Thank y'all for your time. So we would like to do a text amendment for say, chapter 82 to change the due date from April 1st to January 31st. There's a couple of places in chapter 82 that'll have to be cleaned up with the due date, but primarily 82, section 156-8. It takes a long time to renew with the due date being April 1st. We're not able to enforce that until 90 days after. So we get well into the summertime just moments before we send out renewal reminders for the next renewal season. So this will help us, they also said that we can change the date to January 31st since we don't go by gross receipts. It's probably a good date to keep in mind because it's the earliest date the state allows. So they don't have to prepare to kind of gross receipt information or anything like that to where we would need to have our due date closer to IRS's due date for taxes. So does anybody have any questions?
I've always wondered about that over the years paying my occupational tax, like man, this is like drags on.
And it gets forgotten about, so you know, it's easy to forget about.
And we currently mail out, I think around the 1st of November.
I do.
So people are getting plenty of that information already, so.
Yes.
Does anybody have an issue with changing the date?
I think for the first year, we might need to just extend it, just let people know because being a small business, myself, I usually wait until that very last date. So if I'm making that wait, I would just not penalize people this first time, just letting them know that we will be changing it, so.
I plan to send out a letter as soon as we have the second reading so that we can start getting the information out there. A lot of my communication with customers on the phone and in person, I've already let them know that this is coming up. So some of them have already had that contact, a letter will go out. I'll pay attention, any return mail that I make contact with them, maybe have code enforcement personally deliver it if it's return mail, get their address fixed. But yes, I agree with you, I don't think that we should hammer down on them, you know, February 1st next year, I think we should have a little grace and show grace with them because I love our businesses on there.
I have a question. What's the due date for the county?
I do not know, but I can find out for you.
It's actually, I think it's October 1st and then they give a three-month grace period especially or window and then you're late December 31st.
At the end of the year.
At the end of the year.
And every municipality knows it differently along with other things, but yes, we make sure that that information gets out there to them.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Moving into that very discussed term termination of cities, multi-year leasing amendment with Sunoco Recycling, Director of South Coast, Todd Anderson, Staff Attorney Kelsey Carden will address. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Ennis.
Good morning, everyone. I'm coming to propose that we cancel the second contract with Sunoco. Currently, we are in a contract with the city, it's generating no zero revenue, so we're going to cancel that contract. Currently, we're in negotiation for the contract with Carolina Recycling Corporation and it would be profitable if we go forward with that contract. Like currently, we have zero revenue with Sunoco, for instance, if we went with this company, Carolina Recycling Corporation, for instance, OCC was his card board and at the time, the contract was at $185 a ton. So if we do 185 tons times 20 loads per, times 20 tons per load, that's 370 dollars revenue per load. If we can reduce 12 loads per month, that's $44,400 revenue per month minus the baler. The baler will come from the company, they will give us the baler and then how we would pay for the baler is from the revenue that we make on a monthly basis. So it would be no upfront money, everything we make would be minus the baler payment. So we gave them, for instance, if we pay the baler and release it for 60 months, it would be $7,000 a month, so our net revenue to the city would be $37,400. So I think that's real profitable endeavor and currently the OCC is $161 a ton right now. So if we, anytime we produce, we just pay them from the profit that we gave, we gave the revenue.
There are any questions, Mr. Ennis?
Great job, sir. Thank you.
And mayor, just to make sure, the contract that Sunoco is currently in was actually executed back in July of 2014. We are way past the initial term, so automatically we need without this notice of intent not renewing. They're timing wise, we have to give them 60 days or it wouldn't be June 30th that it would renew July 1st, which is why we're asking for it now to go ahead and let them know.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to discuss changes to the solid waste collection process of the downtown central business district, city manager Jessica Conner will address.
Good morning.
All right, so I think most of you have probably already heard and we've talked about this a couple of times specifically with some of our downtown business owners at a meeting that we held in January at Town Hall. Because of our efforts the last several years and one of our goals for both the staff and the commission to beautify downtown and make sure that we revitalize that, we feel like we are doing a really good job on our main thoroughfares with Hill and Solomon's LCI complete with a lot of the code enforcement and property maintenance that's going on. What we're realizing though is that some of our alleyways are pretty nasty and that seems to stem directly from trash collection. So we have asked our downtown business owners to come to an agreement with us as to how we want to collect trash downtown and what we have decided is to remove the carts. That's a big change. We have looked in Mr. Ennis' most particularly when he was in Perry, so we did a, what did he call it, the concierge downtown trash. So this is going to be a little bit different than that. This will be actually centralized dumpster locations, some of which people are already doing, so for some people it will not be a change at all. For others, this will remove and eliminate their trash carts and they will actually have to take it to a centralized dumpster. So in your agenda packet, you have a map of the downtown trash collection areas. Right now, there are already some out there and we're just going to add to them. So every place that you see will either have one eight-yard dumpster or two eight-yard dumpsters and that will be dependent upon where we think the most trash will be collected. Yes, it's going to be a good way, so you can pick. So you'll have some in the parking deck down here at one Griffin Center, so on Bank Alley, you'll have two at Slaton, you'll have two in the county annex and you'll have two over by slices. Most business owners will perfectly fine with this change, though there were some questions and concerns because that does mean they're going to have to actually spend some time throughout the day to take their trash to those locations. But we think overall, especially with us and our T-Spot project looking at revitalizing state and Bank Alley, that's the only way we're going to continue to make any progress. So everybody, for the most part, was on board, it has been since January since we had that meeting, so we wanted to make sure that we brought it to you all because this is a big change. We're suggesting that it become effective June 1st, so we will send out notification to all of the downtown business owners. I intend to hopefully, timing works out, we'll have a new economic development director, so in my walk-around with him and introducing him, we can also go ahead and let them know in person about this change. Most people have been trying it out, I shouldn't say most, some have already tried it out to see if they can just have, you know, maybe their own little 55-gallon container in the back that they have put on wheels and then move to certain areas. The most, I think the ones that have done this the most is out in our DVA parking lot. So they'll have another eight-yard dumpster there, or that's the proposition, and then they will just be able to take it directly there from that alley. So so far, those that are trying it are okay, we know it's going to make some big changes for maybe some of the restaurants that have the most garbage. Lawn from Corner Cafe was at our meeting and so he is aware of that back from Dean Weary. The other thing that you need to know is we have budgeted or will be budgeting for dumpster enclosures. So right now, because we want to do this the right way and not just have wooden enclosures that are bank open all the time or that break, we're going to actually budget for some nice solid potentially concrete dumpster enclosures where they have a walkway in the back, but if you're walking in, you can do that, but they also will be automatic. So our solid waste drivers just press a button when they get to it, it'll automatically close back. As you can imagine, that's a little more extensive than what we've done in the past, so we are budgeting for that in next year's budget aim with transportation money for the parking lots that we are redoing. So we think that at first, this may actually increase illegal dumping unfortunately because we're going to be putting more dumpster containers out for people to be able to use. We are putting signage on them and already have that ready to go that says for private use only and has the industrial drive address on there for the transfer section. And there will also be cameras, that's budgeted in this year's upcoming budget as well for municipal camera system that will show if there has been illegal dumping taking place. Eventually, when we get those enclosures done, they will be able to get to them. So they could dump it in front of it, but we'll have a camera to know if we did it and they will be cited accordingly. So for the first little bit, it may actually increase the problem, but we do think that eventually it will make it much, much better. One other thing to mention that I have recently learned in regards to the financial impact, we're not changing the rate of service, or I didn't think we were. If you'll recall, back in 2017, we went through a change to our collection for downtown business district, asking to tier those districts or tier those businesses based on what type of service they provided. It seems as though six of those got changed, so we actually need to enforce what we adopted back in 2017. So these rates will still be the same as what we adopted then, based on what type of business you are because that's really how much trash you produce. So that will not change. Those that have already been changed will remain the same and then those that need to be updated, most everybody will stay in that tier two and tier two is a shared rate at 33.68 a month, so that will remain the same and is what we explained to everybody in January as well.
Is it still once a week or we can pick up twice a week or count?
We're going to pick up as much as we need to. So that'll be something that we'll sort of have to look at as we go, but Todd, Skaz are already aware of the change. They'll be pulling up all the carts hopefully about the same day that we are ready to start this June 1st and then they'll monitor sort of what we need to do and then work that into our schedule.
So this has been a challenge that we've been fighting for years and we think from the downtown perspective, if this will be a way to clean up the alleys, get the streets, start the trash cans out really. Any other questions or comments?
I do have a question. These proposals rely on solutions, the same thing that the trash committee worked on?
Yes, this is exactly that and it got a little bit postponed because two members of that committee are over with us and us was trying to sort of re-group with me and a couple others. There's been a lot of discussions with code enforcement already, with Kelsey, with Mr. Ennis, with Dr. Keller in regards to facilities and what we need to build after the fact. And one other thing to note is that if you have a private dumpster already on your place of business, that will stay. So we're not changing any of that, it's just if you had a cart behind your business, then that will change.
And I know you had sent out a message to business owners that if they had an interest in any comments, I know we've got one business owner that we want to open up.
Yeah, I think so. We did let people know on their downtown Griffin Business Owners page that we were going to discuss this today, if anybody wanted to come and make sure that they were able to hear what we discussed or what the questions may be. So if this needs, somebody else wants to discuss, that's fine.
So does anybody have, would anybody in the audience like to come to the board with any questions or comments or any instructor criticism?
I was at the original meeting and on board.
All right, wonderful, thank you so much. I like that concierge. I'd invite to discuss revisions to the utility incentive program and the need for resolution to adopt these resolutions. Staff attorney Kelsey Carden, tax license administrator Karen Bennett will address.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Here with us. So Karen's going to actually pass out the copies of the PowerPoint that we're going to have up here. This original idea actually came from Karen and I have to give great props to her for kind of putting this all together. I think it's a really unique solution and will serve a lot of functions. Just to give you an idea at the starting point, so the city Griffins utility incentive program, the current rules for that program were actually set by commission in 2014, but no formal resolution was actually created. So staff, specifically Karen, wanted to rectify that, but we also realized that a lot's changed in the last eight years with regard to economic development in cities. So staff's proposing a new model for the utility incentive program. Today, we're going to kind of present to you what we currently have, what our proposed changes are and why we need to make those changes. Okay, so the method and purpose of this program is really for recruitment of new businesses to the city and the method here is discounting utility rates, so that includes Griffin power, water and wastewater as well as solid waste. That method and purpose are going to stay the same under this current, under the new model, but it's also going to serve to incentivize a couple of other areas that relate to businesses as well. So right now, under the current model, it's pretty straightforward eligibility. The program applies to new local business entities who are coming to the city. So if they are in the county and then they come to a location within the city and register with an OTC, they are still going to be considered a new business entity here. There is a utility consumption cap where, you know, for electric and water and I won't get into the weeds of it, but I, you know, those were set pretty much by our directors of those departments. And basically, if you are a new local business entity and your creation of your business has led to the creation of at least one new full-time job, then you are entitled to have a discount on your utilities. And we'll take a look at what that rate schedule looks like in a moment, but the key factor here that is concerning to staff is that you only have to create one full-time job. Okay? So looking at the actual schedule, that means that if you create one full-time job and that could just be the new business owner employing themselves full-time, you would be entitled to a 30% rate reduction in your first year. Okay? So that means that if you're a business creating five full-time jobs, you're going to get the same benefit as a person who created a job for himself and was operating his business. And I think that that's worked for many years and I think that it was a great incentive program at that time, but we've grown and our goals should be shifting as well. So to kind of move forward with that, we're looking at changing, changing our goals, changing our incentives to kind of match where we are. The first is going to be incentivizing job creation. So like I said, part of staff's concerns were that the person who's creating five full-time jobs is getting the same discount as someone who created one. So Karen's idea was to create a tiered system so that businesses that created more jobs were going to receive a greater discount while we were still going to reward businesses that came to Griffin and created even just the one job. But it would be a tiered system where the more jobs created, the greater the discount you would receive. We'll take a look at the new rate chart in a moment. The second goal is going to be incentivizing accurate job reporting. So we learned through the loss of our Main Street accreditation that one of the problems that we have is accurate reporting of jobs and businesses within the city. So right now, we rely on OTC reporting and that's an honors-based system. So when you're going in, you're registering your business, you're telling us how many employees you have. But there's little incentive for them to be honest when we're going to reward them for just one full-time employee. We don't take into account part-time employees when we're looking at this program, but they are required to report their part-time employees on OTC. With an honor system like that, it's very difficult and actually would require probably an entire new job to audit in order to make sure that our business owners are being honest about how many people they have. So our perspective is we incentivize them to be honest. This will require us to use the OTC method, so we're still going to look to the number of employees that they have reported to us to determine what tier they qualify for with regard to the discounts, but we are going to take into account part-time employees. So with OTC, if you report 10 part-time employees, that's the equivalent of five full-time employees and that's how we determine the amount of OTC tax that you're paying. We want to incorporate that into our incentives as well. So the third and final incentive is incentivizing registration of businesses, so actually getting new businesses to register with an OTC in Griffin. You may not know this or realize this, but salons, markets, markets that have booths for small businesses, for example, or even real estate offices that have independent real estate agents, they may not have any incentive at all to register for an OTC in city of Griffin. They don't have, they previously, under our current program, we're not going to qualify for the utility incentive program. So we want to, we want to loop them into this. So if a new salon, market or office space that's renting out a space can show that they're facilitating new business and show that the new businesses operating under their roof have gotten an OTC, they're going to qualify and we're going to consider that jobs created rather than just looking to the full-time jobs for their employees. It's going to include the people operating under their roof. So a salon is a great example, if you have five hairstylists operating under your roof and you can show us that they, that has resulted in five new OTCs, then you're going to qualify for that first tier for the utility incentive program. We're going to have to flip the side and slide them in, I don't think it's working. Okay, so this is the actual model and again, Karen completely came up with these numbers. It's going to be applicable to electric, water, wastewater and solid waste. You'll have three tiers for the number of jobs created. So the first tier is jobs created 1 to 5, 6 to 10 and then 11 or more. The key here is that in order to qualify for what our current utility incentive program would say is 30%, which is, you know, across the board, you have to show that you created 11 or more jobs. Now that doesn't mean 11 or more, you know, full-time, completely full-time employees, it's the full-time employee equivalent. So like I said before, if you have 10 part-time employees, you're going to have five full-time employees, that's how we calculated with OTC. We're going to use, the number for jobs is going to be determined by the number reported for OTC. For salons, markets or offices facilitating new businesses, that salon, market or office must be a new business itself, must also have an OTC and the jobs are going to be determined by the new OTCs or new businesses that have registered that operate at that location. Renewal is going to be annually with your OTC. If it turns out that a year into the program, you have created more jobs and you report more jobs on your OTC renewal, then you can move up a tier, but you're going to start at year two or year three of that tier. And we are also going to require that they enroll in auto pay for their utility payments. If they cancel that auto pay, then they're going to lose their incentive. Right now, the plan is to allow for everybody who currently operates under our program to be grandfathered in under the 30%, 20%, 10% program. And we, for this program, will be going back a year and basically allowing any new businesses created within the last year to apply if they did not previously qualify. So our salons would be a good example for that. Any questions?
Kelsey, what, just an idea, the number of businesses that we have right now, what percentage that are already involved in the program? Do we just put a business already?
So I have heard the numbers for the past year, so there were 72 new commercial businesses reported in total according to our reporting and again, I'm hoping that this is accurate, 327 new jobs were created. 60 of those reported full-time employees and approximately 50 of those 60 actually applied for the utility incentive program and that's within the last year.
I guess the target or something that we were shooting for, did we meet that goal or?
We don't necessarily have targets for these. It really would be, you know, of course, economic development, want to be recruiting new businesses, so I would have to, you know, I don't have the economic development goal numbers, but I can say that I think it's a good engagement in the program. I do think it makes a big difference for the business owners who, you know, want to come to town. One thing that, you know, we talked about when we did this was that this is really a new phase of economic development for us. So before, we were just recruiting businesses to Griffin, that's what we needed. Now we're shifting gears and saying, you know, we're going to kind of elevate the standard of what, of what we want to recruit here. Potentially a third phase that we may see in the future would be narrowing it instead of it being citywide to potentially opportunity zones. But right now, I think that this, the kind of the proposal is setting forth what, what our new goals should be.
And we've got the accounting part in terms of transferring on an annual basis to the new rate structure without us missing.
Yes, we would need to speak with Claire. One thing that we are going to incorporate into the application process for this is that, you know, if a new owner registers with their OTC, they are kind of responsible for applying for this incentive. So we're not automatically just going to go and, you know, tell our utility department customer service, hey, load this in for them. They're going to have to go and register for that themselves. It is something we make them aware of. On an annual basis at their renewal, if they have increased the number of employees that are jobs that they've created and they can move up a tier, they are also going to be responsible for going and making sure that that is corrected, but the system will be set up for that. And I've also been assured that the auto pay feature is something that customer service is pleased about and that it is also, you know, functional, it should be easy to do.
My question is making sure that on the annual basis internally, we're changing their rates for their pay.
Yes.
So all that's good to go? That make sense, my question?
Yes, it does, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Excellent job. Yes, ma'am.
I know what you said about salons, if you, if a person has an in-home business, a salon, and they're paying their utility like with their residential and they, they're registered as a business, can they still get the?
The incentive? I think that that may actually be more restricted by zoning than anything because if you're operating a home occupation, and I can confirm with Karen on this.
You're already getting a residential rate.
Yeah, you're.
Commercial businesses pay a commercial rate.
Yeah, and I'm, I don't know that you could have more than one business home occupation wise, but specifically salons, I think that they actually have more restrictions on their ability to travel, so we talked about that.
They're not allowed to be mobile, so of course, their salon would have to be in their home, but.
And it is also, you know, functional. It should be easy to do.
My question is making sure that on the annual basis, internally, we're changing their rates for their pay.
Yes.
So all that's good to go. That makes sense, my question?
Yes, it does. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Excellent job. Yes, ma'am.
I know what you said about salons. If you, if a person has an in-home business, a salon, and they're paying their utility like with their residential, and they they're registered as a business, can they still get the?
The incentive? I think that that may actually be more restricted by zoning than anything, because if you're operating a home occupation, and I can confirm with Karen on this.
You're already getting a residential rate.
Yeah, you're.
Commercial businesses pay a commercial rate.
Yeah, and I'm, I don't know that you could have more than one business home occupational wise, specifically salons. I think that they actually have more restrictions on their ability to travel. So we talked about that.
Yeah, they're not allowed to be mobile. So of course, their salon would have to be in their home. But you're wondering if they could qualify for the incentive as a home occupation salon. That's something that we would probably need to discuss if we were going to extend this to residential rate customers.
And off the top of my head, I would, I would also think that there's potentially a zoning issue if you have, you know, more than one, more than one home occupational business operating under one roof as to whether or not at what point we're going to be considering that to be a commercial use.
Okay. If, say for instance, a person has, is home, and they set up their salon on their property, it's not in the house, it's a separate building, what, would they have, they have to have?
There is a stipulation, and I don't know off the top of my head, but I can research that for you. There is a stipulation under home occupation, the ordinance that there's some criteria there for home occupation where you can't increase.
The primary goal of that from a home occupation is to make sure that residence is the primary use and that the home occupation is obviously kind of considered. So at no point in time would you want there to be kind of like a flip in that toward the business starts to overtake the residential character.
In addition to that.
I agree, you have to be careful of that.
I think that there's also some concerns with the water wastewater stuff. So if they're operating a full-blown salon with multiple hairstylists out of their house, I think Dr. Keller would have something to say about that. So there's multiple other considerations that I think would kind of, that would, that would be one of those that we would have to take on a case-by-case, you know, basis where Karen would come and say, hey, this is what they're applying for. This is what our concern is. And like I said, the current numbers that we're looking at do apply to commercial businesses. So I don't know that we've actually had, I need to check with Claire on how many of our home occupation people have attempted to apply for, you know, for this program. But it doesn't look from these numbers like there have been any at this point.
And I can ask the question because during the pandemic, we found out that there were a lot of businesses operating that are unlicensed, which, and they operate these businesses out of home, wherever, without a license, which is probably hurts us for them not to be licensed. So I would just.
Unlicensed practice, especially in that industry, there's a lot who do that, unfortunately. We leave that to the Secretary of State to regulate the unlicensed part of it, but I certainly would love to have their occupational tax. So it was, it was nice to see that we have that many businesses on that list that were receiving PDP but weren't paying occupational tax for those. So a lot more businesses we were unaware of.
Any other question?
I think the intent of the program was only for a commercial rate. I would not recommend extending that to a residential rate. I think that just creates more issues than what you want to be able to prove if you start a home occupation and it doesn't. I think with this change, making it contingent upon who has an occupational tax certificate would help. But I still think you're opening the door for all kinds of issues. Your position says it has to be a commercial rate for you to be able to qualify that for the passing judgment at this point.
Sounds pretty good to me. Thank you.
We're all good?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
With the assistance, six, it's for the American Rescue Plan Act, state multiple fund fiscal recovery funds used by the city. A rapid discussion proposed uses for the second tranche. Tranche. Tranche, thank you. Which is expected to just burst in August 2022. City manager Jessica Cottrell will address.
Okay, so timing-wise, just wanted to let you all know that we were required to submit our report to Treasury by April 30. Mr. Schwab was able to do that last Thursday, so we are in compliance with our reporting so far. They finally made it a little bit easier for us as a non-entitlement unit. We received less than $10 million, so we can actually just say that all of that will be used for governmental services. You all, in our discussions a few months ago, already decided we were going to use some of that. So I wanted to update you on where we were for what has already been approved, and then also offer you some of the proposed uses that we were looking at at this point. So first, we did premium pay for our employees. There were three different actual dates that we had to pay that because some, some people were actually out on leave during the first payment. So that's why you see those three different dates. That total ended up being $716,162. Infrastructure is our big Roseview purchase mainly. At this time, that was $627,718. That included the actual purchase price, the closing costs, and then demolition. Demolition ran almost $60,000, which is about what we were expecting. So that is done. One Griffin Center, we have paid for the roof repairs out of that. It was budgeted last year in our facilities budget, but it was well over budget. And because gas is now well over budget, we're hoping to be able to bring the budget in a quarterly cleanup to use some of the facility's money for gas. So the roof has been paid out of that as well. And then you authorize the payment of the Potato Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Study to figure out some INI issues. So we paid Paragon and NYSN Robotics to look into our sewer in Potato Creek Basin, and then we still have $388,000 pending. So that total for all of the infrastructure will be $1.514 million. So the total that we've obligated or incurred so far is $2.23 million. But there have been questions about that so far. Okay. And what that means then is we still have about a little over $10 million remaining from the first tranche. That's what we have sitting in the bank right now from the federal government. And we are supposed to receive a second tranche August of this year of another $4.25 million, which leaves us about $6.3 million available for future uses. When we last came to you, we talked about broadband and wanting to make an investment in our broadband services and our fiber services with Griffin Fiber. At that time, we asked for $3 million, which you did approve, and then a little bit more in regards to a grant for matching funds. Unfortunately, we did not receive that grant. We're not sure if that one's closed or if they may reopen that. But we, because we did not receive that, we are asking for $500,000 more to continue with the downtown expansion. This is the underserved and unserved areas that we talked about from Experiment down to Merryweather on the west side of Town. So that's where that $3 million would go, and then the additional $500,000 is for the downtown area. If you don't want to do that, since we did not receive that grant, we can certainly do less than that. We can put more in there. It's just sort of what y'all want to see at this point. I think if you want to hear from Mr. Cotton, he can sort of let you know how the medical overlay district expansion is going to see where we think will fit. Also, on tonight's agenda, you have a master services agreement with some rates that we're asking you to adopt because we are now getting into marketing our our services for fiber. So that one is a proposed use. Elevator replacement. If you come into City Hall on any given day, you may be taking the stairs because our elevators are from the 70s. They're not going to make it much longer without a complete overhaul. You can't even find parts at this point. So we think that at this point, instead of trying to budget for it in facilities, it would just be best to go ahead and take it from this money. We're expecting about a $475,000 expense for that, though. Also, our HVAC and our IT server room, which is really the guts of all of our stuff, all of our, all of our data is going out. For some reason, it was not replaced when we did the million-dollar replacement with everything else in the building. So that needs to be upgraded, and we've gotten a quote from Wright Brothers at $250,000. It's pretty much a sole source because it has to tie into the system we already have, which is theirs. Welcome Center upgrades. For those that don't know, the Welcome Center is old. It's been old for a long time, and we put a lot of money into it with a T-grant several years ago. But because of that building's age and sort of what it's made of, it's time to do some more work there. We need to do some sunlight work. We need to do some window replacement, which y'all approved last time, last meeting. So there's about $200,000 worth of waterproofing and encapsulation that needs to be done there. And then property acquisition, we have talked about at length in executive session. We have not finalized that contract yet, so that is still reserved at $500,000. Because that appraisal came back a little bit higher, it may be more than that. But since we have an option at 500, we're hoping to award them that way. We're waiting on that IGA to come back. And then we need a generator for the new PD building. For some reason, that was not budgeted. And if we're going to keep or lease the old PD, we need to keep that generator there because some of our 911 equipment is at the old building. So we would need to buy a new generator for the new PD building. So those proposed uses pretty much eat up anything that we will receive in August, as well as $700,000 of what we have currently, which would leave us with about 1.3. All of this, for the most part, except for what has already been expended, is open for discussion. I think Mr. Schwab, myself, Mr. Cotton, Ms. Carden, a lot of people have sat on a lot of different calls in regards to this money from GMA. I think Ms. Schwab, Mr. Schwab has from GFPA, Ms. Carden has from G, oh, yeah, GMA as well. So we've had a lot of listening sessions in regards to this. You've probably heard on the news that the federal government is attempting to claw back some of this money if it was spent incorrectly. And so we certainly don't feel like we have done that. But what we're hearing recommended from from our counterparts is that you spend it, maybe not necessarily quickly, but spend it and spend it the way that they told you that you could. But if we leave it out there, we don't want them to take it back. So we are sort of going ahead and letting y'all know where we are since we have that first report due, and then asking if there's anything that you feel like has changed that we may need to address in these proposed uses or anything that we haven't thought about that y'all are thinking about that we need to consider.
So the premium pay comes to an end after 2022, correct?
Premium pay is done. That was a one-time payment.
Right, done. Do we have, I guess, reserves left over? Do we have enough to need to put more back into, like, what the benefits are?
Pay, so you cannot, well, it's not suggested, and I completely agree, to use it for something that you will have to maintain in the future because you're going to have to budget for that at some point. So if there's been 1.3 to give back to the employees, which I'm always for, I think that they are most deserving, you've got to be able to maintain that if you're actually increasing your salary. That's why we called it a premium pay. It was for the time that they were doing essential, Mr. Smith, back in April 2020. It seems like forever now. So they were awarded for the time that they spent working through the pandemic. So we could certainly do that again, since it did continue from even past November of last year. But I would only suggest that as a one-time sort of bonus or premium pay because otherwise, I'm going to be coming to you asking for a million rate increase to continue that that salary improvement. That, with the compensation study is going to happen anyway. Go ahead and put that out there since we brought it up. But I wouldn't recommend that for salary increases.
So looking at the total items, not including the fiber, that's $1,485,000. We have in the bank $2,028,000, some change. So the difference of that is 543,670. If we designate, I don't want to spend something we don't already have in hand.
I agree.
If we set 543,670 plus or minus for the broadband, would that be useful, Mr. Cotton, in terms of your overall
I think.
scheme or in my musical thinking?
I'm, I think I need a little bit more clarification. So you're starting what number?
So my starting number.
The total obligated or incurred.
The remaining of the first tranche, tranche day, is $2,028,670,29.
Right.
Is the number. And if you take out all the items, the other items total, $1,485,000, including broadband.
Okay.
That leaves $543,670,000 that we could designate out of that amount of money towards broadband unless someone's got another project. And then we wait and see what we actually get in August. So whether we want to talk about putting it towards broadband or whether we're serious about the, what we're talking about in the budget, the amphitheater project downtown, the other proposal that's coming before us, whatever we're going to talk about. Just a spitball idea. That way, we can take care of all those items that are, we definitely need to deal with.
And, and I guess.
So with $543,000, or have you already spent more than that that you need reimbursement for? It's kind of my question.
We've already said $90,000, we originally discussed.
Okay.
That is your question?
But that $90,000 is going towards the medical overlay district or the West Griffin area or downtown? I don't know where the numbers.
That's going, that's going towards West Griffin and downtown. So $3 million is going towards West Griffin. $500,000 is going towards downtown.
So this 543 could go ahead and move towards the downtown, making that happen so you'll have the medical overlay, the downtown happening?
Yes.
And then we could look at, once we get the paycheck in the mail, the $4,259,000, and look at it whether we put it towards West Griffin or?
Well, we've, we've already started engineering, we've already, we've engineered one for West Griffin.
You're right. And you started also the engineering downtown, I guess.
Yes.
So I just need to stab me, recognition of staff, what you, you know you need these items.
And that's what I was, so if we do not.
We don't have a check in the mail yet for $4.259 million, so.
If you do not do somebody's proposed uses, it will have to be budgeted. So those are sort of, unfortunately, you don't really have options there, except for how you pay for them, not whether or not you pay for them. So, yeah, you could go ahead and do that, knowing that those expenses we can afford out of the ones that are already, the funds remaining in the bank now, and then wait and see what happens with broadband. I think the the initial purpose of Treasury was to do the unserved or underserved areas, which I think West Griffin would certainly qualify more than would downtown. However, you're not going to make near as big of an impact in West Griffin with $550,000 as you would downtown. I think you could offer all of downtown for that and only a very small portion of what we had engineered.
The purpose of downtown is you have to go through downtown to get to West Griffin anyway. So to leave it out, it would seem kind of exclusionary from an engineering standpoint.
When we committed the $3 million for, that was not contingent, that was from the armpit, right? And we, and we committed it.
You did, but really not by vote, I guess. So we have incurred, like Mr. Cotton said, about $90,000, $100,000 in engineering services to proceed. Once we didn't get that grant, we sort of needed to decide, are we still willing to go ahead and do that? There hadn't really been a formal vote. It was more a consensus like we're doing now. And we have brought that back to you as we've incurred expenses to vote on it or proposed expenses. So technically, you have not said you have obligated those specifically for anything, but you did in this kind of meeting obligated for fiber, yes.
Okay. So you say we have about 2. something million left.
Currently in the bank, yes, ma'am.
So was, is that money, money that we had committed to Robert?
You can say that, yeah.
And that's fine, too, I mean, so how, how it was five of me, I just, as long as we're, don't sit here and are spending money, but having received the check is my only concern.
Yeah, so right now, you have committed a million more than what we have, knowing from the federal government, however much faith you put in that at this point, that we will have another 4.259.
But you're saying even if we don't get the other money, it has to be budgeted anyway. Budgeted in our regular budget anyway.
Yes, ma'am. So I think that's sort of where we are at this point, knowing that we didn't get that broadband grant and knowing that we have these other expenses come up. Do we go ahead and say, okay, fiber is the most important thing, and we're going to use that $2 million remaining for only fiber? Or do we want to go ahead and do some of the things that we're going to have to budget for if not with this money that we know we have, and then sort of see where we end up after that? It's really.
And I don't have a problem, maybe we can spend, whether we budget these in the budget to be paid for and just put it all towards broadband and then wait for the check. The anticipated $4.2 million, and figure that into our budget. If that's doable, we come back and pick up those costs or? You're not going to spend that whole $3.5 million in six months.
No, we have until 2026.
Right, so I mean, so if we know we're going to get the money, the 543 would actually, do I, I mean, could you spend all of that about August 2022 before the next check comes in or would you have?
Yes.
So how much, so I guess, how much do you need to spend between now and August 22? We get the?
Our, our estimated calls for the West Griffin is $3 million, and then our estimated calls for downtown are about $750,000.
What are you going to spend between now and when the next second payment allocation of August 2022 comes about?
August, so we, our anticipated timeline for construction on West Griffin is we will start construction in the next 12 months, and we anticipate our construction costs upfront to be about $125 million.
Between now and August 22?
Yes.
So how much?
Four months.
Next four months, how much are you going to spend the next four months is what I'm wondering.
Probably nothing.
Yeah, I mean, that's it. Trying to determine it based on August twenty-two, twenty-two was not really the point. We just sort of need to know. If you don't want to spend these things that have to occur from ARPA money, I have to throw them in the budget next week. That, that was sort of the intent of this discussion.
And I'm going to pay for those items so they don't have to be paid for or figured into your budget so that you can deal with the other.
That's the, that's the consensus.
Employees.
Right.
And then we know you feel very comfortable. We're going to get four point two million dollars.
I don't see, Mr. Schwab, have you heard otherwise or Ms. Carden and your discussions are just trailing?
As far as I know, we're slated for August.
So my, my, my proposal is we pay the one point four of it, what had budgeted or spend the one million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand for those items. Put the difference source broadband and then with intent to finish out West Griffin. If that's what, in city of, in the downtown.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I, either that or you're going to have to be willing to budget this. So.
We'll go with what we just said.
Okay.
Get, get these items rolling, get the elevators fixed, let's buy that a piece of land, like Griffin, right?
How tight is the budget coming up, Jessica, is there a?
Ms. Thompson is upstairs pulling her hair off right now. So I don't actually have a number that we're looking at. I can assure you that it is, it is, we're wanting to figure out where we're going to make some cuts. And then even then have to come back.
Thank you.
On this list, if we need to do that, if we have the money to go ahead and make these repairs.
I mean, fortunately, when we were looking at something like this, you're not talking about replacing a, you know, H V A C, H V A C system that often. You're not talking about elevator replacements. They've been here since the seventies. That's sort of what this money was intended for. If you have some big time expenses that you couldn't budget for, you can use it for this. Don't try and make it an ongoing expense that you're going to have year after year. Because you're going to have to figure that out in a different capacity. This is sort of what that's for. So fortunately or unfortunately, it somewhat works out. And we could certainly live along and say we're not going to replace elevators and maybe save a hundred thousand, but.
When he takes it.
More and more often, people are taking stairs.
Jessica, what is our potential return on investment for all that?
It's quite a way to question.
We, we target to get back our investment for six months.
Good.
We don't need to wait on that one.
It's a one-way. Do we spread it out further and go other places?
Jessica, this might be, neither be here nor there. What about the discussion on the parking deck? Is that budgeted for or?
I got it, I got the note here. The news on the parking deck, we've had two engineering studies, both basically said the same thing. We're going to need three hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred and seventy-five to band-aid it for three to four years. They're saying in four years, that parking deck's got to go. And the estimated probable cost to date, demolition, engineering design, and construction is sixteen million dollars.
Guess there's not a current doubt that we can apply for for that.
The fortunate thing in that regard, and this is another sort of bucket of money that we're looking at, but we wanted to get this in budget done. Don't forget that we have excess slots funds from twenty sixteen. The way that that contract in I G A was written and Mr. Waylon has given us a legal opinion on this. Is we chose back in twenty fifteen when we wrote that ballot referendum where any excess would go, it all went to transportation. So transportation and slots does not have to be specifically designated as to what the projects are going to be. It just says transportation. So we have about five million in excess that we can spend on transportation projects. A parking deck is certainly transportation. That's, it's actually delineated in the law as transportation. So we can use that money for the initial band-aids, as Dr. Keller calls them. But after that, it's either going to have to be a slot project. I mean, we can't budget that. So that'll be a hurdle that we'll have to overcome in a couple of years that we'll have to plan for some way. And then our two slots money also, you know, we have some generalizations in there that we can use if needed for some, for something else. I'm, I promise you, we have tried to be as creative as possible to say that elevators move people and so they should be transportation.
Right.
We're trying to stretch it to the best that we can to, to use it the way that we think is the most effective for our citizens, that that might be what we want. Second.
I would like to say one thing on parking deck. Now that you have two engineered studies stamped, you've kind of been put on notice that in sometime in the very near future. Happens and you're not taking a progressive step to get that replaced, just putting that out with the cloud.
So maybe we need to take some of the money that's coming from that other. A lot.
No, that'll come from the excess slots that we already have. But we wanted, if you weren't going to be willing to do some of the proposed uses with our ARPA money. Then we needed to figure out how to make it excess slots transportation money. So now that we have this decision, we can move on to say we will be using excess slots for the parking deck. We could go ahead and get that on the next agenda. Because we do have that engineered survey for what we need to do. And then we'll have to.
We'll admit it.
Yeah, we'll have to bid that. So once we get that notice of intent to award and contract, we'll have it directly in front of you. So that's, that's a high priority, but we needed to know if you were put with us and then.
We'll sole source the elevator and I can't promise you, but right now, lead times are horrible. I mean, I'm waiting on pipe nine months out. So considering I, I, we can sole source the elevators better off.
So we're not using them at all right now?
No, you can use them. Oh, just take your phone.
Take your phone with you. Just take your phone with you.
Yeah, S O S, ta, ta, ta.
Fire department has done a good bit of training.
Tap S O S, you're good.
And rescue.
All right. We ready to roll?
Yes.
Okay, moving, final line, considering executive session for send O C G section. Day one day for the purpose of overriding the addition of purchase. Property with motion to adjourn session. Mr. Tinsley with motion, second by Mrs. Murray. Jennifer. Do we have, we are back in from executive session. Do we have a motion to put dinner in the workshop? So the motion by Mr. Tinsley, second by Mr. Delore. All the favoritism, please, you see y'all at six o'clock.
Thanks, guys.